All right. Good evening. Happy 2024. Sorry, very weird echo. We always like to aim high. Now? I think you can just do it on the computer. All right, how about now? All right, all good. Okay, good evening. Welcome to 2024. Very good year, the year, I guess, our 25th anniversary this year, so I think really good things coming ahead. Calling to order the Tuesday, January 2 meeting. First off, we will do the council member swearing in with council member Trine and our city clerk. And we'll do a photo afterwards as well.
Test.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Kent Trine.
I Kent Trine.
Have been duly elected to the office.
Have been duly elected to the office.
Of the city of Sammamish.
Of the city of Sammamish.
Council member, position four.
Council member, position four.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of my office as prescribed.
Perform the duties of my office as prescribed.
By law and to the best of my ability.
By law and to the best of my ability.
I will support and maintain the laws and constitution.
I will support the laws and the constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
And the ordinances of the city of Sammamish.
And the ordinances of the city of Sammamish.
Great. Congratulations. And you sign.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have the nomination of a new mayor and deputy mayor, so I will first ask for nominations for mayor. Councilmember Howe?
I nominate Kaylee Clark.
Councilmember Stewart?
I nominate Amy Lamb.
All righty, so we have two nominations, so we do, we will vote in order. I'm just reading the instructions as I'm looking at this. So first, we will take voting for myself. So councilmembers, if you will do a voice vote and raise of hands, all those in favor of having me as mayor say aye and raise your hands. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? All right, so six, and councilmember Stewart is a nay. Thank you, I appreciate it. I believe I don't need to do a second round. Okay. Next, I will entertain a motion for, not a motion, a nomination for deputy. Councilmember Howe, are you, oh, no, you're good. Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate councilmember Howe for deputy mayor.
Is there anyone else, any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of councilmember Howe as our new deputy mayor, say aye and raise your hands. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. Now deputy mayor. All righty, and Ryan would like to take a photo of all of us? Okay, and then all of us, so it's not too awkward? All righty, thank you, and I want to thank deputy mayor Lamb for her great deputy services. All right, now we'll have our city clerk do a roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Howe?
Here.
Or Amy Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta?
Here.
Councilmember Rochino Farrell?
Here.
Thank you. Back to you, mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Farrell, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Stewart, will you read our land acknowledgement, please? If you have it up, I have it here, too.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we were going to start, excuse me, with public comment. We do have a public hearing later, so if you have any comments on the STCA Brownstones West, you can wait until then for that comment. So first, public comment, we have Syed. And I believe you have two public comments on two different topics, is that correct? Would you like to just go back to back?
No, separately.
Okay. You want to go after Mary?
I want to talk about the second, because it has to do with the contract with the PTIT.
Okay, so I think you can do three minutes and then three minutes, so you can start your first.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Syed Zafarian. I live in Sammamish, House 21714, Northeast 29th Street. As a part of the agenda tonight, you will be receiving staff report on a major transportation projects, so I thought that would be timely and appropriate for me to make the comment and take the opportunity to bring another matter to your attention. And that is something that has been bothering me for a long time, and that is the absence of a commission to deal with the transportation. As we know, we are very fortunate to be in a city that has been functioning very well efficiently with so many commissions. You have for the planning, you have planning commission, you have park and rec commission, you have art commission, you have human resources, human services commission, but no transportation. So I thought that would be appropriate this beginning of the years. I'm sure that you're going to go through the agenda for the rest of the year, and that is something that you should be really seriously considering. And you look around the jurisdictions around us, Bellevue, Kirkland, Issaquah, these three that I know, they have functioned in transportation commission for many, many years and have been working very well. The composition of the potential transportation commission would be individuals from the citizens, from the public at large, hopefully with the expertise in the transportation, either engineering side or the planning side. And also, if the council wanted to have representation, there are some examples. For instance, Bellevue has not only the transportation commission, but one of the council is assigned as a liaison to the commission, so he or she would act as a go-between between the council and that commission. So it's, of course, if you wanted to take that as an example, that would be great. The commission responsibility is basically, that's an advisory committee, there's not decision-making, this advisory to the council. The members will be appointed by the council, and they will be helping the staff on dealing with a broad range of issue from concurrency, traffic impact, transportation modeling, short and long-range planning, TIP, transportation master plan, transit plan, I can go on. There are so many different projects, program, and activities that the city can benefit by having a number of expertise from the public and that they can give you and bias opinion about transportation matters, either on the planning side or the program side or the engineering side. So I highly encourage you at least to look at it, and hopefully you would come with the conclusion. By the way, the city, based on my understanding.
Thank you, that's it for that one.
Just one more comment, that the city had a transportation, a transportation committee that is operational for a couple of years.
Would you like to do your second? Three minutes? Or do you want a break?
I want to break.
Okay, take a three-minute break, okay. Mary?
Green, okay. Good evening. My name is Mary Amick, and my comments are related to reducing our waste, particularly plastic waste. The United States is the world leader in generating plastic waste, producing an annual 42 million metric tons of plastic waste. Plastic does not decompose. This means that all plastic that has ever been produced has ended up in the environment. Plastic does not just live in the landfills and oceans, but it pollutes our bodies, too. Chemicals in plastic are known to contain hormone-disrupting chemicals, cancer-causing ingredients, and more alarming health issues. Recycled plastic isn't any better. A recent study showed that recycled plastic pellets contained even more toxic chemicals than new plastics. Pet plastic, which is commonly used in water bottles, has been shown to contain a variety of chemicals like antimony and cobalt. There will never be a world without plastic, but we need a drastic reduction in single-use plastic and production. We need to hold businesses and government accountable, and we need to encourage a circular economy. Steps we can take: prioritize reusable and refillable products, and limit single-use plastic consumption when possible. And I have some, just some practical ideas for residents. We could line our kitchen trash can with a paper bag instead of a plastic bag. You can get these at the grocery store, along with your, you know, you take these, too, your recyclable, but this fits right nicely into your kitchen trash, and it decomposes. And it takes 20 years for a plastic bag to decompose or to disintegrate, and there's still microplastics left, you know. Bring, we could bring reusable grocery bags with cloth produce bags in them when shopping. So if you have your, you can buy these at the store or online, different cotton or different kind of produce bags when you go to the grocery store. Keep them in your grocery bag. You can bring a reusable bottle with you wherever you go, or a coffee cup as well. When buying fruit, for instance, satsumas, choose loose satsumas or fruit in cardboard, cardboard box instead of satsumas in that plastic netting or plastic bags. During the holiday season, you know, you might be buying these. Just buy, buy them loose.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have commissions open, by the way, for application, our climate and sustainability commission, if you're interested.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, Syed, are you ready for number two? Unless there's someone else that did not sign, get a chance to sign up for public comment? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. And you can just state your name and your city of residence?
Sure, I'm Denise Steele-Darnell, and Sammamish 2121, 200th Avenue Southeast in Sammamish. And first of all, I want to thank you for bringing all that up. I've been a big proponent of Sammamish banning plastic bags, and also coming up, in case you don't know, June 2024, the state of Washington is banning a lot of styrofoam, so that will be a good thing, but I would love to talk to you more. And I'm hoping that maybe in the newsletter, something like this could be put in, some of her tips, and I will also be checking out that sustainability commission, so I'm glad you have that, I didn't realize. I'm actually here tonight to talk about the town center, and I'm just concerned about the upcoming study that is possibly being planned, that's going to be more money that the city is putting in to be able to look into the roads and more of the environmental studies of the town center. I'm really concerned about us spending more money around that. And then I'm also concerned about the tree ordinances not being followed. I know I emailed several of you last June. I work at Discovery Elementary, and the clear-cutting, it was pretty upsetting. And I'm just concerned that the beautiful trees that are left over here across from Met Market, that will be completely decimated, and I'm hoping that there's a way that the city can work with the developers to really make sure that there's an arborist and someone that's stopping the trees from getting cut down, that are not necessarily needed to be cut down. If you look at some of our older neighborhoods, like the one where I live in Sammamish Woods, it's beautiful. So when did we stop doing that? When did we stop building houses and apartments where there were trees still around us? So I'm just, I know a lot of you are very environmental when I've talked to you, like Kaylee, I know we talked before, and you really are environmental. I hope you can stand by that to help us save the remaining trees over there that don't need to be cut. For example, there's a darling little one that has a little tree growing inside a big one, and I just feel worried for that tree and all the others that are over there. I'm also concerned about the 4,100, that the number's being changed to 4,100 dwellings as a possibility, because I think we're fooling ourselves to think that other people in Sammamish are not going to sell to developers. So we're not really limiting development by saying, we're only going to develop here. We can do 4,100 for low-cost housing being one of the reasons, and then the rest of Sammamish will be saved. That's not possible. People can still sell their land to developers if they want. So I would just beg of you to not raise the number to 4,100 and to keep it at the 2,000 for the schools, the traffic, and the environment. Thank you for listening, and I look forward, if you're interested in talking to me more, I'd be happy to meet as well.
Thank you. All right, Syed, you're up.
As item of discussion tonight is going to be, the staff has requested the authorization of the council to approve the contract with the PTIT, and I sent an email to council members, to all of you, expressing my concerns. I don't, I don't think that I have enough time to go through all of them, but I want to highlight some of them. I guess the bottom line, one of the issue that is very important that you should be really considering is that, is this the best way, is this the most effective way to spend a million dollars, do another planning-level study that really looks at in a long-range plan that doesn't solve the problem that citizens that they have on a daily basis? And instead, it would be much more cost-effective to zero in on the troubled spots, very few intersections along the Sahali Way, that the money can go towards the immediate relief on some of those congestion, some of them operational, some of them requires maybe a little bit of right-of-way taking and all that, and that is probably the most cost-effective way of spending the money. The other thing that is specific, as far as the scope, that bothers me is that it looks like that the scope is written in a way with the full attention to the concurrency only, and I think that the council should be looking at, when you're making investment in the transportation, concurrency is an issue, there's no question about it, because that relates to the development, but also the other aspects of the transportation, transportation system is about the improving the roadways that have been used for athletic reasons, for walking, jogging, human connection, interaction with the communities and so forth, that concurrency unfortunately doesn't address that. So I have a strong reservation about the scope that is written based on concurrency. The other one is that I'm not sure that I understand the role of the individual subcontractors. I know HDR, I've worked with them, but I don't know, for instance, what is the, I believe it is HDR, this is one of the consultant subcontract. The other one is the overall, facing the reality that this is a project that we don't really have the money to build it anyway, so even if you go ahead and spend a million dollars, I don't think that, even though that city staff has, on a number of occasions, they tried to bring federal money, but they have not been able to, because really it doesn't compete very well with the other regional projects. And the last item that I want to kind of bring up, again, has to do with the scope of the work, it looks like that they haven't really paid that much attention to the non-motorized beyond the sidewalk and all that. Transit is a major element, and I have brought up this to a number of occasions at the council, that we should be really creative as far as the funding.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right, we'll move to online if there was anyone that signed up earlier.
For the new reasonable accommodations, those who have pre-registered by 3 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to give testimony. If you wish to speak regarding the public hearing, please do not raise your hand at this time. When the public hearing begins, you will have an opportunity to give comment then. I will unmute the pre-registered callers in order they've raised their hands. You will have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city in which you live for the record, and I will unmute the first caller.
Hello, this is Mary Victor. I've lived in Sammamish 23 years. Just before I start the Zoom, it shows black. We get audio, but we don't see anything unless you're listening to YouTube channel. So tonight, I wanted to speak about something I emailed in. It is from the city of Bozeman, Montana, which is roughly about the same size and livability and likability as Sammamish. For Syed, they do have a transportation board that's worked very well for a number of years, and they did a study on speed limits, because from 2017 to 2021, they were rated one of the top 25 safest cities over 50,000 in population, but over the last couple of years, they've had a number of pedestrian bike vehicle accidents. They've actually had a couple people that died, including a very well-beloved teacher from the high school. So one of the things that they did, and I sent this to you, it's from their July 25th meeting of 2023, they did what I thought was a pretty novel ordinance, where they decided that, hey, school zones really should be 15 miles per hour all day long and all night long, because people use them to walk through. They said the same thing for parks, because not only do people use them on and off hours, but there's a lot of connectivity around those places, and then also there's wildlife that uses them. And it made everything really consistent. It was supported by all the city commissioner, council members there, and it was supported by the boards, and they did have feedback and input, and they looked up different things. But one of the things I didn't put in my email, which was part of the presentation by their engineering transportation director, was why is vehicle speed important? And if you look from 55, 45, 35, 25, 15 miles per hour, if you just reduce speed by 10%, so like 35 instead of 40, you'll reduce fatalities by 37%, and you reduce injuries, serious injuries, by 27%. And they also did a graph that's kind of an exponentially increasing graph. If someone is hit at 50 miles per hour, it's 75% of the people will die. If they're hit at 32 miles per hour, 25% of the people die. So really reducing the speed helps, and if they're hit at 23 miles per hour, only 10% of the people will die. So it's important to keep the speeds between 15, 20, 25, 35, and then as soon as you're above 35, 45, that's where the graph really goes upwards. So anyway, I sent you the information. I hope you'll look at it. I think it's something simple that Sammamish could add. I was very grateful for the last meeting in December, where a lot of people from the public and from the council had talked about connectivity, and in order to be able to keep our safe, beautiful, green, people enjoying going around, the wildlife working and saving things, I think we need people to slow down, and I think that some of those things I mailed from the city of Bozeman would be helpful. So thank you for listening tonight. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
If we have any other pre-registered callers and would like to give comment, please raise your hand. And also to note, those who are attempting to view the meeting via Zoom, you may need to update your Zoom account. Updates may be causing it to not be visible. And it doesn't look like we have any more commenters online, so back to you, mayor.
Great, thank you so much. Sorry. All right, now we have our consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve this unless anyone has any further questions on it. Maybe we could mute our, or mute our, Mary? All right, council, I will entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'm moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. And for a proclamation for Martin Luther King National Day of Service, deputy mayor, Howe?
So Monday, January 15th is our National Day of Service, whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union, and whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities, and whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service, and whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights empowers us all, and the principles enshrined in the Declaration are as relevant today as they were in 1948, and whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday, and whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our residents together, and strengthen our communities and nation, and whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service, and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to serve, to service throughout the year, and whereas each of us can and must contribute to make our communities better with increased opportunity for all residents. Therefore, now, the mayor of Sammamish, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim January 15th, 2024, as a day of service in Sammamish, and call upon the people of the community to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Day and throughout the year.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our.
Mayor, if I may, really quickly before we move on?
Yeah.
I want to invite everyone to join the city for the Day of Service on January 15th. We will be at Lower Commons Park between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., pulling noxious weeds and doing plantings, so we'd. So we'd like to invite the community, high school students that are interested. You can get service hours for doing this. So we will be out there rain or shine, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So I thought this might be a good time to follow up on that wonderful proclamation with information about our day of service.
Great, thank you. Oh, thank you. All righty. Kelly, you running the show? Right, it looks like we have a gaggle of people today, so this is great. Okay, can you all see my screen? Okay, perfect. This is a joint effort this evening. So thank you, city council. For the record, my name is Kelly Hildy and I am the deputy director of community development. Tonight I am joined by Peter Brennan and Matt Samwick with STCA, Matt Van Dam with Terein Holmes and Anna Thompson with Milburn Architects. This evening, STCA and the team will present proposed minor modifications to the Brownstone West preliminary subdivision, excuse me, along with amendments to the development agreement between the city and STCA, which the city council, which this city council originally approved on December 6th, 2023. Or 2020, yeah, 2020, no, 2022, sorry. Oh, my gosh, New Year's has thrown me off. Following our presentation, the city council will hold a public hearing before deliberating and voting on the proposed amendments to the development agreement. With that, I will hand it over to Matt Samwick, who will give some opening words, and Matt Van Dam, who will start the presentation.
Thank you, Kelly. Happy New Year to council, happy New Year to the city staff. At the start of the new year, we'd like to thank you again for the support of our public private project, so to speak, and renew our invitation to all council members to contact us at Innovation Realty and STCA with any questions or concerns you may have or requests to tour our property again or for the very first time. Believe it or not, this is the 10th New Year we have spent in this wonderful community and we look forward to the groundbreaking in the near future out at Brownstones West and continued collaboration with the city as we begin the next part of our placemaking journey. We also appreciate the opportunity tonight to introduce our building partner for the Brownstones West neighborhood, Terein Holmes. Matt Van Dam, a partner with Terein, will explain the proposed amendment to make an already great plan even better. And we selected Terein after a long process because they have the same community first vision that we do at IRP and STCA. And with that, I will turn it over to Matt.
Thank you for the kind words, Matt. Congratulations to all who are newly appointed. Thank you for having us here. I know we're, haven't been here for 10 years, but appreciate your time, appreciate staff's time working with us in the short amount of time to work through our proposal tonight. Pretty straightforward, I will walk you through sort of the fundamental change and 30,000 feet, Anna will guide through the specifics on the, the architecture. We've actually been working on the project for about a year or so, kind of contemplating this, and this is pretty important and we think this is a benefit to, to all. So can you all see on your screen what I'm seeing here? Okay. So fundamentally, the left side, which you've, you've seen before and approved, which is included in the original DA, that was approved a little over a year ago, we're focusing really on the, the western portion of the Brownstones West that faces 222nd Place Southeast. And you'll notice the little red, or sorry, the yellow rectangles there. That was proposed and approved in the DA to be single family. Fundamentally, what we're, we're talking about tonight is to rethink that specifically and allow for attached, not detached, single family, which is in line with the code of Town Center. And the diversion from that is actually the single family, which was approved. So a couple of things which are really important to note, the zoning allows for three story product right now along the western corridor, along 222nd. Originally, that was also for the, for the attached to the northwest corner and also the detached, single family as well. So as we got a little bit further into it and really started to move away from just plans on a, on a, on a page here and what single family is in someone's mind and looked at the actual nature of what it was going to really look like and how it was going to function and all the FER, the FAR that kind of goes into it, we kind of proposed a couple of changes.
And I feel, hi everyone, I'm Anna Thompson. And I might be responsible while we're at the table tonight. You all have been working for 10 long years, it sounds like here, and made a lot of headway. And on the, the site plan, when I started digging in to the code research and was approached by Terein to begin design efforts for the vertical, dug into what the goals are for the Town Center, the code parameters for the TCC zoning that is on that western portion of our site, and what that would allow and what those homes would really look like and function as. And as I got into that, was finding that to, to meet the goals of the wedding cake effect, I was, I had my, I step out of bounds a lot and try different things to try to get the best place possible for, for residents of any new community. And in looking at the goals within the Town Center, the ones that jumped out at me were the ones that speak to emphasizing human scale and providing appropriate transitions between uses and emphasizing the wedding cake approach and reducing the impacts to adjacent residential neighborhoods. And looking to work within that framework and what's the best way to meet that? So I did the research on the single family and found that with the 20 foot wide units and an FAR limit and the height, to get the type of natural light and space within those units, it really drives them to, to use that full 35 foot height limit and a three story form, which is some of the graphics you've seen on the next page here. Down the top is what, what the massing I was finding would really maximize the, the livability of the units for this site. And then I tried to come at it from a different tack and if you will, those 10 foot spacings between the detached units, we've all kind of driven past those developments and seen that. You don't really see through to the backyard on those. And so what if we took that top brick off of our three story block stack and slotted it down the side into that gap, if you will? And the, the perception of that street experience and additional modulation and the front porches, does this provide a similar human pedestrian scale neighborhood experience with a lesser vertical scale, which is in better relation to the existing homes across 222nd Place there? So that was really the genesis of this idea. And how to best uphold the spirit of that wedding cake transition fitting into the existing fabric of Sammamish in an organic kind of way and respecting was here as we kind of act as this western gateway into the Town Center itself.
So fundamentally, our proposal is to reduce the height on the western side from three story, which is currently zoned and currently designed, make it all two story, but attach 10 of the units that were previously single family. In reality, we find that single family conjures up a lot of ideas in our head, but when we finally saw what this actually looks like in trying to maximize the actual square footage within the parameters of your own code, they created some very strange conditions and we think not the best conditions for the neighbors across the street to the west. Doing two story, it activates the front yards a lot more. We've included porches, so what you're seeing right here is actually what you'll see in the building code and what we're actually proposing to actually build. It's not just a conceptual model. So front porches on modulation, so some setbacks between the units that create a sort of a distinction from home to home. We want that to be activated with people enjoying their front yards. It also creates the opportunity for more usable backyard space, which you don't see in this, this image, private backyard, backyard space that again lives like single family home and detached garages on the alleyways. So it keeps, you know, pedestrians in the front and, and vehicles in the back as well. There's more green space. There's no change to our overall tree retention for the site that you've already approved. It may be a different tree here or there, but overall the retention is the same. We're getting a lot more light and air to 222nd. So again, a benefit for the neighbors, a benefit for the streetscape. It's a lot more activated. We're also changing the, it gives us an opportunity to widen the entrance to Sammamish Commons Park in two different areas, which we'll talk about in just, just a moment. And overall, we think it's a better, more attractive design and in line with the goals of Town Center. Another image of it. This is, so this is actually what it looks like in 3D, currently approved, and what we're actually proposing outside of actual colors on the, on the southern part of it. So colors may change. We gotta, you know. And these are the two entrances. They actually, we haven't changed the positioning too much, a few feet here or there to the south at, at the park entrance, but we're increasing them from 20 feet to 26 feet in two separate areas. So overall benefits, again, we just outlined them a little bit more here. Accessibility is also really important. Two story product is a lot more attractive to a number of different populations. Certainly people that are aging, aging in place, have disabilities or potential physical disabilities. It's much easier for us to add mobility up one set of stairs or even potentially an elevator in the future, whether we do that on a development perspective or residents can certainly change that in the future. Three story we, we find is, is limiting for a lot of places for ages, so we, we like that, that ability as well.
And I don't want to bore you too much in the details of the architectural, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have from the graphics that you've seen as well.
Great, thank you. I know we had a couple of questions come up today, which I hear that you are all prepared to answer. So Councilmember Lamb, did you want to ask, we were talking about square footage and I think you have, yeah.
Yeah, sure. I was interested in the square footage from the single family to the townhomes and the price points, since you're saying that the townhomes will be more affordable, will be more affordable than the single family.
Sure, yeah, we know, appreciate it. So the square footage essentially for the, for the single family across three stories in order to maximize the footprint and the actual floor area ratio, get the most amount of square footage that we could get is about 1,700 square feet across three different floors. That's about a 20 by 30 essentially box. It looks more like your traditional townhouse that you might see in a little more urban dense neighborhood. And the setbacks in between the buildings are roughly about eight to 10 feet or so. So you've got 10 foot wall, 10 foot wide space in between about a three story building. So, so that's for the proposed single family. The proposed attached product is about a 24 foot wide, which gives us a lot more options for layouts. They are about 2,000 feet with a detached garage and roughly a 20 by 20 outdoor private, private space in the back between the garage and the actual building. They're a lot more efficient for us to build a two story building when it is attached. We can then pass that along to, to future residents. It's hard to say exactly what the market is, we're all trying to figure that out. It's been a very interesting year from a financial perspective on what's happening. But we know that there is a premium, certainly a premium on the plateau across Sammamish. We're selling single family homes right on the other side of the commons. There's a premium for a single family, so we anticipate that a single family, even though it might be a little bit less square footage, would be about 35 to maybe 40% more expensive if we were to sell it rather than an attached product. So we feel like we could sell it for a lot less, we could build it more efficiently. And overall, it actually lives more like a single family by what we've designed together. Hope that answers your questions as much as I...
Not exactly. Can you give me some numbers, please?
I, it's, it's hard to say. It's hard to say because we're not actively selling something like this right now and there's not a lot of comps for it. I'd say if you had to throw out maybe a number, you know, a million, somewhere closer to a million three or four, maybe for the townhouse. And I mean, we haven't seen a single family less than 2 million on the plateau roughly. So I'm really guessing at that, it's hard to say. Just trying to give some kind of perspective of what that, that might look like.
I'd actually be looking at numbers less than a million point three, just because if you're saying that you can build these more affordable and the square footage is, if it's 1,700 for a single family and it's 2,000 and you're building more affordable for a townhome, I would hope that it would be more affordable and knowing that the goal of the city is to build more affordable homes, I would hope that, that, that would be one of the goals is to lower the price point. The other comment I wanted to make was that, I'm just looking at the renderings and I know that they're renderings, I'm not an architect, I am a designer, and the, the renderings of the single, of the townhomes don't, to me, they could, they could use some more consideration and to make them look more visually appealing. They look a little random to me, a little hodgepodge. So I would just consider that to just make them look a little bit more modern, a little bit more streamlined. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, How?
Didn't know who that was. Thank you. You know, and Councilmember Lamb, I appreciate your comment about the design, but I, I have to say that I like the more random and set forward, set back style to make it look more like a community of similar but not the same as. So I, you're going to run into individual tastes, but I totally agree with her comment about price point. It needs to get under a million, something needs to be under a million. How many bedrooms are we talking about? Is it two? Is it three? Are there any bedrooms on the first floor?
It's a three and four, and every unit on the 222nd side would have a potential bedroom on the first floor as well.
Okay. Now, for the garages, you're using the term garage, not carport. Do you really mean garage?
Yes.
Okay. So it'd be really awesome to get a picture of the alleyway. Alley's can be tremendously valuable. They can be great if, if done well.
Yeah.
So would love to see that aspect of it reflected and get a, kind of another sense of just, so if this is facing this way and these others are facing that way, what's their, what, what's their aspect? What are they focused in on? What are they looking at? Because it's pretty clear what, what one set is, but I'm not as sure about some of the others. So that, I think that was really where I was headed with this. Thanks.
Can I respond to that? I would, we did a, we designed a project similar to this concept in Newcastle called Lake House at Lake Boren. It's just on the west side of the lake. It's a similar two story private courtyard with detached garage. And we could share the, the location of that, so you could kind of get a sense of that if you were, if you're interested there. And then yes, that's another point to make on the, the single family with the FAR restriction, we would not be able to provide enclosed private garages with the townhomes. We would. And that's because of the FAR maximum in the code for the TCC zone.
So that would give them additional storage, for example?
Correct. Correct. Yeah. And just the safety factor by the park.
And I assume that there's new technology also with soundproofing between the individual units so that people don't feel
Yes.
Like they're in an apartment, per se.
Correct. Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Does the design, it looks like the design will actually increase the coverage or the impervious surface, because you're not going to have the 10 feet in between the houses. Is that correct?
No, it's actually not. If anything, it decreases the overall impervious. There's more outdoor space on the front yards and there's more, that side yard that was unusable becomes backyard space that's also usable. So, we're sort of keeping in line with detention. We're not proposing any change to the detention or anything.
Great. And then, I don't know if it's intentional or just because it's a diagram, but it looks like the green space from Alley B into the park area has been reduced in size. Was that intentional or just sort of a drawing issue?
No, this proposal doesn't have any change to the park space.
Okay. Because there's like a little, there's like, not in the houses that you're changing, but in the houses that would be behind them. It just looks smaller, so I'm assuming that was just a
Yeah.
A random
Yep.
Diagram thing. Okay, cool. That's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to highlight, I think, the trail area that is newly added. I think that that's a great opportunity. That may not be an extremely critical linkage, but that's exactly what I want to see from the city, is when there's development, we take advantage of the opportunity. We create a trail. As far as I understand, the development agreement specifically says the trail is maintained by the city. It's publicly accessible. So, that's very exciting to me. So, I'm glad that that was able to be a part of this update.
Yeah, thank you. We think, we think overall, the access to the commons, obviously, and the access to the private-public park on to the east side is really important for everybody involved.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you. Mayor, I just had three comments really for you, just kind of things that were occurring to me over this last holiday time when we've all been on break. The colors that you paint the homes are really important to me. And I understand the colors may be chosen because you may want them to be eye-catching from the street. There might be multiple reasons why you choose the colors you choose, but I would really encourage you to choose colors that fit the environment. And I know as an architect, you probably always are thinking of that, but not just the environment of the built environment, but the natural environment in which it's setting. And as I'm sure you've gathered from our public comment that you probably heard tonight, our community is very, very sensitive to our natural environment. I would encourage you to choose colors that blend in with the natural environment that these homes are going to sit in and not put like an orange house against a green tree or a yellow house against, you know, any kind of a natural environment. It's very jarring. It's very, it gets everybody's back up and it's, I think it's an opportunity. I've seen homes around our small city where we've put a home in a natural environment and then they've painted it orange, orange and kind of a brown color. And I think it's a really missed opportunity. It may seem like a small detail, but I think it's something that developers could, developers and builders could go a long way to winning over public opinion sometimes by being super sensitive to those kinds of opinions. So, if you kind of think of more natural colors, something that would kind of blend in and be there and be part of the landscape as opposed to something that's fighting too much. The second thing I just wanted to add, I concur with Councilmember Lamb about the price point. I understand we're dealing with market forces and we have been through a very turbulent time when it comes to the property, but we are also trying to find homes for people and we need to find homes that people can afford. And so, I would encourage you to really think about your product and offering a product that people can truly afford and stay here and live here throughout the, throughout the time of their life. So, think about affordability when you're aiming to try and price this product. And then, the last thing I want to talk about, and it was also brought up tonight, about our tree retention policy and about respecting the trees. All of us, I'm in a development that was built 23 years ago, and we now as a HOA are dealing with the trees that the builder put in because it's the wrong tree in the wrong place. And that was, we've got this huge tree in a tiny, tiny back garden and now we're trying to decide what we should do with it. And it's going to cost the homeowner a ton of money to have to remove the tree and replace it with the correct tree. So, and I see from your artist impression that there are like tree-lined streets that are being proposed. Please think about the trees that you put in place, that the right tree in the right place, that they're, if nothing else, drought tolerant. Even our native trees are struggling now to hold on to the small amount of rain we seem to get. So, above all, make the plantings and the soft scape drought tolerant. I think it will go a long way to making the new development kind of grow in faster and be more sustainable. So, if you could kind of consider those options. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. On the note of orange houses, I promise we will not build any orange houses. We're really sensitive to colors as well. It's a little bit further down the line, but we're of a similar mindset as you are in all of our developments, not just in Sammamish. And same thing with trees. It's, we're working really closely with staff and the code that you already have in place for any new tree that we plant, that it's sustainable, that it's bonded and warranted and irrigated and is the right appropriate species for the development. So, that's something that is an ongoing dialogue and part of our building approval process. So, thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you, yes. So, the right plant in the right place.
Yeah.
And wouldn't it be great even if it didn't need irrigation? That would even be another great thing. So, and that, you know, and I'm sure there are product out there that could meet that. So, if you kind of think about that, that would be, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
I just wanted to clarify how much space is in the front yard. I know these are just renderings, but it looked like there was more front yard space in the single-family than there was in the townhomes. Is that correct?
I think what, and what was the question that Councilmember Stewart had about the impervious is that we were looking at the, and this is, I'll get, I'll get to the answer in a roundabout kind of way here, but aggregating the spaces on each lot to consolidate and best, best activate each area instead of having multiple small sections that aren't very usable, kind of like you have in multifamily design codes. You want your open spaces to be of meaningful and usable sizes. On our, the way we're placing the homes and the rendering does not do a very good job of showing those depths and the modulation of the building to have the various, the variety in the sizes. It's roughly the same. The corner units have more gracious set-back front yards to provide better sightlines and allow for additional landscaping on those to kind of emphasize those crossings and for safety. But I think there would be, they would be similar to slightly deeper is what we've kind of looked at in comparing the two. And apologies if that wasn't explicitly clear in the graphics here tonight.
All right. Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Trane?
Yeah, this question I think is for Kelly, though, but so help me understand in the resolution itself, third whereas, where it talks about the approved preliminary subdivision, the city and SCCA representatives agree that three minor design modifications to approve preliminary subdivision. And then, this is the part that I have a question about it. And extending to the Brownstone East would result in a substantial public benefit. Could you help me understand the substantial public benefit, please?
I just found the resolution in the packet. Can you remind me which recital we're on? Can you give me the reference to that?
For the resolution?
On the resolution, you, yeah.
It's in our packet.
You were just referencing. Oh. Page 38. 2.3, okay.
24, yeah. So, there's, you know, the list of wherashes and it gets down to one, two, three, the fourth one.
Yes. So, let me go back to the agenda, though, because we didn't list the public benefit. So, I think first and foremost, we are looking at a townhome typology. Those are typically less expensive. I know when we're talking about the millions, it may not seem so, but it is providing that typology here in the city of Sammamish where townhomes are not very common. So, it is adding that. It is marketing to a more diverse group of individuals in the community who are looking at a townhome unit and are looking into getting into, you know, their first home. Again, I know those price ranges seem unattainable, but there is a market for that. Additionally, you are getting some more open space. You're getting more meaningful open space on each one of those lots, as mentioned by Anna. I think that is also substantial. I think probably the most important one is its relationship to Ball Morel, which is the subdivision right across the street on 222nd. And you're looking at, instead of a, you know, a very skinny, single-family residential home that's three stories next to, in some cases, one-story homes across the street, it is really out of scale. So, I really appreciate the approach when coming to the building plans, taking a second look at that and seeing what is actually more appropriate when we're trying to blend with the residential areas adjacent to town center. I think that's one of the biggest benefits of this proposal and something that staff fully support. This is all allowed by code. So, I would say those are the top three, probably some others that I'm missing, but those are the ones that come to mind.
Okay, so I get that. I heard that. I don't disagree with you on that. I guess my question is, is that how does it extend to the Brownstone East? I get how West works and everything you said there was about West, so excellent. But in what we would approve in this resolution, it's talking about that this extends to the Brownstone East, resulting in a benefit, a substantial benefit. Based on the drawings I'm looking at, I don't see any substantial. Okay, is there a benefit to the community? Yes. But the word substantial in our resolution, to me, would call for something, oh, I'm going to get something, the residents are going to benefit from something. So, if you told me you were going to give me more park space, yay. Or you're going to provide a better trail connection like Councilman Gupta talked about, then I see the benefit, right? If it's, so I guess I'm, I don't understand why we'd approve a resolution that clearly states, because it's in writing then, that it extends to the Brownstone East if it's not going to result in benefits. So, if you can help me out, understand that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I'm going to look to Peter.
It does say here, too, it says that you're turning 223rd to an open space in a park, so open space park, and then the construction of regional stormwater facilities. Like, it has three things that are listed as the public benefits after that.
Yeah, so I can jump in here.
Please do.
Peter Brennan with Innovation Really Partners. So, yeah, 2.4 is about the enhanced public benefits. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. So, 2.4 is about the, the public benefits for the development agreement that was approved last December. And so, that's where we took a 223rd, which was a road that was going in between the townhomes, and that was converted to the park, to Councilmember Gupta's point. So, that was a public benefit for the development versus having just the non-motorized pedestrian trail that was going to be abutting the 223rd road. So, it gave us a lot more open space, a lot more pervious space. Then, another benefit of the development agreement was the regional stormwater system. And then, we had another public benefit of realignment of Southeast 6 to make it, to improve the access, to create the additional access into Lower Sammamish Commons Park and also to make that a more linear street rather than curved, so that then that also was a benefit for the regional stormwater system. So, those public, those were all, those were the benefits that were, that 2.4 is referencing.
And our city attorney had something, too, that might clarify language.
Thanks, Mayor. So, I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Trane's comments about the fourth whereas recital. This is in the resolution located at page 126 of your packet. And these whereas recitals are giving legislative history leading up to this proposed First Amendment to Development Agreement that council's being asked to consider for approval tonight. And the whereas recital that you're looking at was based on the prior resolution passed December 6, 2022, Resolution 2022-980. And so, that is describing the substantial public benefits as declared in that prior resolution related to the original development agreement. So, I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Yeah, and thank you, because, I mean, I totally understand that. And so, my question is, is still, the question is, how does this extend? So, going forward, though, is something going to extend into Brownstone East?
Oh, in terms of that specific comment, I just think that it means extending to Brownstone's East insofar as West will connect to East. I think it's just a geographic reference is all.
Then, how's that a benefit? Okay, so the wording is definitely misleading, similar to your regional stormwater comments, which are definitely misleading to the public as to what a regional stormwater is, even though we know it's defined in our code, which that was a mistake. Based on what the original, if we go back in the history of the town center, that would be something we could also put in the whereas's, too, that we're not actually getting a regional stormwater facility out of this even the beginning or maybe even later on down the road. So, I just, I struggle with, I appreciate the efforts that you bring forward and what you're proposing. I think your design is spot-on for Sammamish in lowering it from a three-story to two-story to tie in the wedding cake and try to look at the goals that Sammamish has set forth, this council has set forth, what we thought we were going to get from the town center development. So, I appreciate you guys coming in and shedding some positive light to it. I'm just still going to, I'm struggling to be able to approve it or to move forward with, with what we're seeing here at this point. I think more can be done to benefit, really benefit, the residents of Sammamish. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lamb has one more. I was just going to say that I do appreciate this. I think the other, like the three-story always looked like dominoes to me. They just look like they're going to, like a windstorm is going to knock them over. So, I really appreciate this. I love the look of it. Excited that you can actually maybe see trees over them. Obviously, again, just a rendering, but yeah, I'm super excited. We'll have camouflage homes. Councilmember Lamb?
So, this question is maybe is more directed to you, Kelly. So, knowing that quite a few councilmembers here have talked about affordability and, you know, you guys are going to go away, what can we expect when this in some way comes back to us? And like, are we just going to have to say, oh, you know, well, I guess it's all just going to end up being market? Or will we, will we see some form of like active sort of collaboration in terms of getting the price point down on this?
I think if I understand the question correctly, I think that's a hard one for me to answer because the city obviously doesn't have control of the market or setting the prices for home. That is, that's the private sector. So, that's difficult. I think where the city does have an opportunity is the project we just kicked off, which is we're looking at the town center plan and code amendments to get more affordable housing and looking at those incentives and requirements for affordable housing. I think that's where we can do a lot of good and working with our partners to really understand the market conditions, not only when it comes to determining density, but what are some of the barriers? What are some of the zoning ordinances that are, our zoning code that are challenging that make building homes more expensive? I think we've talked a little bit about that tonight, and I think that's where we can take a closer look at that. And that's going to, that's going to be compromised. We're going to have to talk about affordable housing versus environment. We're going to have to talk about, you know, building typology and what really is reasonable for affordability. A 5,000-square-foot, single-family resident, that is, that's, that's very challenging. So, I think we have a lot of policy questions coming to city council here in the first quarter as part of that work to really as part of that work to really get that direction from you and where we want to go. But I think it's imperative that we do work with our development community to revise the Town Center Plan and Code to get affordable housing because they're the ones who will actually build it.
So it won't actually affect Brownstone's East or West? This is your talk in the future?
Yeah, this project is vested under our current Town Center Code. So this would be all projects after that work is completed and adopted.
Okay, thank you.
And I do want to point out for affordability, there are 10% three arch, for actual affordable units. They're under the arch regional program as well.
One more thing, Councilmember Lam, if I might. I know that we all have a lot of energy we want to put into housing choices and affordability. These are just the first 38 units. And even though we're trying to solve all the problems in the first 38 units, which is not immaterial, the first two phases of what we're doing here will contain nearly 77 units, which almost doubles the amount of affordable housing in the entire city. So it is not lost on us what part of our mission is here. And unfortunately, we're dealing with numbers that would never fit a rational definition of affordable. But we are always trying to do the most we can to make them more attainable. So you will get a lot more for the money and a lot less building materials used with townhouses. And those townhouses will have a price point either lower or will give you much more value for your money, which is also a community aspect of this. So as we attempt to change the housing stock in Sammamish, it is not lost on us. And just by getting the first two phases on the first 17 acres of a nearly 100-acre buildable project out, we will have many, many more affordable units. And it is the job of the multifamily in large part to do the heavy lifting of affordability in this project as currently envisioned in the comprehensive plan. So we'll look forward to lots more discussion because the world has changed a bit and we will try to accommodate it in every way possible.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that these are multifamily and that the height is lowered. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Kelly, you made a comment there that we'd have to make some choices between like affordability and environment. But honestly, townhomes are more sustainable, assuming you're not gonna use lower-quality building products for the multifamily or the attached versus the single-family. Having attached, they have fewer exterior walls. So that in and of itself actually reduces the overall heating and cooling costs and greenhouse gas emissions by a lot. So I actually think when we talk about things like affordability and the environment, there are actually a lot of overlap between those things. When we build things sustainably, it actually reduces the total cost of ownership and actually has positive impacts for everyone. So I just wanted to see if there was something I was missing in your comment there.
Oh, no, I think that's just kind of a broad.
Okay.
Yeah, statement. I think you can, we can really get into the details on what we want to see in the Town Center and the path forward to getting more affordable units, either by just market conditions or through required requirements and incentives.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Sorry, I had just one more question, and it had to do with a public comment that we received. There's someone that's concerned that this idea of townhomes that are connected doesn't fit into the neighborhood from their point of view. They felt the single, with the differentiation, made more sense. And I realize this is very subjective, but I'm very curious to know if there's any like trends or studies that are indicating that if you create a varied-looking sort of set of structures where it doesn't look like barracks, basically. So I, I just, you don't know what's in that person's mind. You don't know what they're seeing. But, but I'm anticipating that they're thinking that it's just gonna look like this blank wall. So I'm just curious if there's a trend or if there's any studies you could help me understand because I like to be able to respond to these folks if we can.
One of the things that Anna can talk a little bit more about it too is, is in your own code, there calls for a lot of building modulation, which is also, even if it weren't in your code, that's something that's important to us when we do multifamily, when we do attached product. And I think the rendering does a good indication of that. Again, those are, those are true dimensions, you know, that we're, that we're showing you right now. Again, different colors and appropriate colors, which also helps with that modulation. But it will, it will look like, you know, single-family homes that are just happen to be touching. You know what I mean? And set back and moving. There's articulation in different-sized porches. Again, we want to activate the front of that space. We think that it's really beneficial for the residents that live there that feel like they have a community and a relationship to the folks that live across the street, 222nd. I have a fairly large family, three kids. I envision if I was here that they would be out front and running around and learning to ride bikes and things like that, which we think is a really important part of the community that not every townhouse gets to actually appreciate and present. So we see this as a really valuable opportunity. We're very sensitive to that. And that's why we're, we're trying to design that in that, in that way.
And if I can just note too, the Town Center Development Regulations do require, as Matt mentioned, exterior design standards that are very specific to the Town Center. And actually, we don't have exterior design standards for anywhere else in the city but the Town Center. And so a lot of the comments made tonight, those are actually addressed, like colors, roof lines, all sorts of things. They're, they're very specific in the Town Center. And it's to get that variation and diversity, but also blend with the natural environment.
All right, if there are no other questions, we shall open the public hearing.
Yes.
And then I don't think there's anyone in the room that signed up? Okay, so move to online public comment for the public hearing and approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement with STCA LLC for Brownstone's West.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. Attendees joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Doesn't look like we have any online callers either.
All right, and I think on the next slide or so, we do have a recommended motion. So council, would anyone like to make any questions, comments, or a motion? And I believe it is Resolution 2024-10, or 1033. Councilmember Stewart? Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. I move to pass Resolution Number R2024-1033, approving the Brownstone's West Limited Scope Amended Development Agreement and authorizing the city manager to sign the same on the city's behalf. Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other comments or questions? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, 6-1, that resolution passes. Thank you. Hopefully you'll come more often. This is super fun for you, I'm sure. So really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mayor, excuse us.
Yes.
Can you close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah. So sorry. We are closing the public hearing now for Resolution 2024-1033. Thank you so much. I would've forgot that. Obviously, I did. Okay, new business. We have the approval for the contract award for the Sahali Way Corridor Study Plan. So we have Audrey, maybe Jed is virtual. There's someone maybe I don't know. Okay, awesome. Is it Doug 2.0 or?
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Council. For the record, Audrey Starsee, Public Works Director for the city. Sitting to my right is our new Deputy Director of Public Works, Greg Stamatio. It's his first day and we're excited to have him onboard. Joining us online, Doug Van Gelder, City Engineer, as well as our Senior Project Engineer for the Capital Projects Team. Jed Ireland will be presenting this evening. And we're here to discuss the proposed scope of work for the Sahali Way Corridor Plan. And at the end, we do have a motion prepared for council to authorize the prepared, the contract award. Sorry. Jed and hopefully Doug are online. I know we've had some difficulties with Zoom tonight, so I can pivot and share the presentation if we need to. Let's see, are they online?
Okay, I'm here.
Awesome, okay.
Okay, good. Being promoted allowed, I guess, some video for me to be seen. So I will share. Okay, so if that's visible?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So I'm just gonna show some slides on this Sahali Way Corridor Study just to give some background on what's included in this effort. The first slide will be shown, this shows the study area. This is the northern end of the 228th and Sahali Corridor from Northeast 12th Street to State Route 202. And you'll notice from this that this map shows the city limit. And what that's indicating is that we are gonna be testing and looking at improvements actually outside the northern limits of the city so that we can see the sensitivity to those improvements, how they affect traffic within the city limits. And the goals, at the end of this, we would like to have a corridor plan with a defined Phase 1 project. This is something that we could then in 2025 take to a 30% design level that would be competitive for grant application. And so the part of the study work will be looking at analyses to see which of these elements would be competitive for grant funding. And so that's the main objective. In addition to that, we'll be looking for options for, you know, near-term, smaller projects that can, you know, help with transit or with pedestrian or non-motorized access today, things that can be done before that larger effort. And then, of course, the corridor plan will have subsequent phases to complete the corridor between the limits. And so it'll be a roadmap for future improvements. Okay, sorry. So the study objectives is that first, we'll be looking at new information, new traffic counts, primarily traffic has changed since the work-at-home trends. And we do have multiple data points now of that trend. In addition, we want to be looking at the new transportation, the traffic demand model. And we want to make sure that we're in alignment with the Transit Plan, Climate Action Plan, and the Camp Brantsa Plan update. We also want to be, and then again, analyzing the corridor sensitivity to potential improvements to the lanes leading down State Route 202 and a potential improvement of a roundabout at the intersection with Highway 202. The Wash Dot Corridor Study looked at that and identified a long-term plan that a roundabout could improve operations there. So we want to look and see operationally how much benefit could that have to congestion within the city. This is all gonna kick off with a council workshop planned for this quarter, first quarter of this year, so we can get council feedback on what do we need to hear from the, from the public? And how do we, you know, how can we generate the most beneficial public outreach? And then making sure that it fits, the different alternatives would fit within the overall policy objectives of the council. Then we'll be using that resident feedback to just, one thought is looking at their corridor needs now. We can imagine that they're gonna be expecting non-motorized uses, access to transit, improved access to transit, and then also access to light rail and finding out their plans for that when it becomes online. And then again, the end result is that we'll have a Phase 1 project, a large project that will be competitive for grant funding, and then near-term projects that we can do in advance at a higher priority. The slides just has some milestones. Again, first quarter of this year is the council workshop. We'll be also having a stakeholder agencies workshop first quarter with the other agencies. And we'll be starting second quarter with a public engagement plan. The first round will be in that second quarter. And from that, we're gonna take the feedback from that and we're gonna give a council update on what we learned from that and then also engagement with some of the alternatives and the analysis that's been done to that point. That's gonna inform what we do with the second round of public engagement for the last quarter of this year. And at that meeting, we're gonna be asking them to review three public alternatives. These are gonna be ones that have, that have gone through the analysis and from council feedback that have come down from the potential alternatives of up to 10 alternatives. And then just, the plan is then to by third, second quarter of 2025, we would have the adoption of the corridor plan that would have the Phase 1. And we would use the remainder of 2025 to design that to the 30% design level. The fee is $923,000. These are the tasks in there, and I'll highlight some of them. A lot of these analyses are done that are gonna assist with the design when we start the 30% design. For instance, the geotechnical analysis, starting at Task 7, structural analysis, stormwater analysis at 9, and the environmental analysis. These are gonna help us really look at what the different alternatives have in terms of impacts of cost. And so that's gonna help us look through the corridor and really, that's one of the elements, one of the deciding factors that might influence how we phase the corridor and how we phase some of the near-term priority projects. Next, I'll, I'll just highlight Tasks 5, 6, and 11. These are the alternative development. Starting at Task 5, we're starting with a high level of 10 potential alternatives that we're gonna be looking at. We're gonna filter those down to six alternatives, which is the initial alternatives analysis. These are the ones that are gonna be subjected to the micro-simulation so we can compare them with travel times in addition to higher scrutiny with cost estimates. And then, of course, when we get down to the preferred alternatives analysis, we're gonna be looking in detail at the final three that make it to the final public outreach, the second round of the public outreach. This project is funded in both the Transportation 340 and the 438 Stormwater Funds, and it is traffic impact fee eligible. And then for 2025, of course, the plan would be that for Phase 1, we would need a supplement. We'd be asking for a supplement to take Phase 1, preferred alternative to 30% design so that it would be competitive grant application ready. And here is just a final, for consideration, a motion at the end. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you so much, Jed. Back to us for questions? Awesome. All right, council, do you have any questions? And I know you answered a few of ours from your public comments as well, the email you sent us. Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. Can you help me understand why you think this project would be grant-eligible? Because I don't perceive this to be something that impacts favorably the region, per se. It just us.
Right, yes, there are. This one, because it's not near a commercial center, it doesn't meet all of the qualifications for some grant applications. However, because it's geared towards transit, it'll be including multiple modes, including sidewalk and bike lanes. It could be eligible for, eligible for some of the common state programs like the Traffic Transportation Improvement Board grants. And so there will be eligibility, there will be analysis to see which elements. But a lot of the projects do focus on business centers, and this doesn't have one. So it probably would be these other elements that would make it competitive.
So related to that, would you also need to spec or put a hypothetical transit center or, you know, transit parking also to attach it somehow to your analysis so that you actually have, you know, a connective tissue that makes sense?
Typically, the transit centers and what we're looking at for the draft transit plan that will be coming to you next month will be mobility hubs so that they feature a wide variety of amenities. And we spoke, spoke to that a little bit at the end of last year. This could be something that we could look at, but it would most likely be things like queue jumps. Do we potentially add a lane north of 37th to prioritize transit? Do we potentially add a lane north of 37th to prioritize transit all the way through? Some of the analysis will help with that in figuring out, one, what makes the most sense for the, for the city and the future of the city, as well as what would help us with grants.
I mean, I know that that sound transit parking is like forever out, may never, may we may never get it, and I appreciate and understand that. I'm just wondering what we need to do to put hypothetically something in front of a grant committee to try to even make a stronger case for something that I think might be potentially a little weak. So that's just a, that's a question mark, I'm not saying you can answer that right now. Another thing I have a question about, I didn't see any mention of King County, like coordinating anything with King County. Am I confused?
We'll be, we'll be coordinating with King County as well as WashDOT.
I mean, with, I mean, in the proposal. I mean, I'm just, it seems to me like that the coordination and outreach is just to residents and just some mammoth. But isn't there a, a direct connection to potentially working with King County in terms of leveraging whatever plans they may have in place? Or whatever development that they've got going on over there? You know, where do we fit into that plan?
We will absolutely be working with our, our stakeholder.
Okay, but not, not, not the consultants, that's the city that's doing it then?
Working with the consultants.
Okay.
So Jed, if you want to elaborate on that too, it's, it is defined in one of the tasks that we will be performing quite a bit of stakeholder outreach and engagement.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true. Maybe we didn't list in there, King County, but of course, that'll be one of the stakeholders, one of the agencies, because we're going to be affecting King County and their jurisdiction, whether it's down the hill to State Route 202 or modifying the intersection that serves King County unincorporated residents as well.
Now, something else that would be really helpful for me is you, the tasks were listed, which, great, got that, but not a price point. It would be wonderful to have that itemized with the price point. We already know what the end number is. How much are each of those segments? Because part of making a decision on something like this is trying to prioritize, potentially where, where some of those tasks may fall in and may have value to us. So it's really unclear to me as to, how much does that cost versus this? And what if I don't care about that? Can I knock that bill back because it's expensive? Which, I know you know that. And I was also looking for just a little bit more detail around this idea of the 202 roundabout, in terms of impacts. Is that something you're considering, seeing what that would do to traffic? Or I just wasn't clear?
We're looking at studying if that were to be put in, what the impacts would be to our improvements as well.
Okay. Because it was recently pointed out to me that that's all wetland down there, and that that could be extremely problematic. And so I, I also was trying to understand feasibility, practicality. Do we need to do, you know, timing of when we do this kind of, this kind of study? So I'm just trying to get, slot those kinds of answers in.
And that's why this, the scope of work is so broad and includes 12 tasks, but some of them are really heavy on the geotechnical work and some of that work that'll help us inform and truly identify the constraints for the corridor, so that we can develop a range of alternatives that will lead us to one that is constructable. So a lot of that work will be done with this particular contract and scope of work that will be carried through to design phase as well.
And is it open? Open, in terms of the potential outcomes, as far as like, regardless of what it could cost, these would be the very best options? Or are you putting a ceiling?
Jed, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the first phase of alternative development, we're not looking at costs. We are really looking at this with a very innovative lens to, to understand what the potential could be for the, the corridor, and we bring the costs in when it's narrowed down to six alternatives.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Maybe it's just me, but I just feel like I'm not ready to vote on this tonight. I feel like it's, this is a huge undertaking. I know the Sahali corridor has been kind of a contentious issue over the, the decades, and I don't feel like I have all the information that I need to fully understand what we're undertaking, we're going to spend almost a million dollars on. I do, however, love the idea of the council workshop. I think that that's a great idea, and I think that might be a place where we could begin. I, because the kind of things that come up to me in my limited knowledge is that I'm not quite sure why we're doing this until the comp plan has been revised, why we wouldn't do this after the comprehensive plan update has been done. Maybe, maybe this is the correct way, but it just feels, that doesn't feel right to me. And I also took on board the public comment that we received tonight. I really love that idea of a transportation commission as well. And I'm not sure, as a city, we've ever had one. I think that's something we really should consider. So, and I know that we've done a report on the Sahali corridor probably several years ago now. Probably, of course, everything is prior, prior to the pandemic. And I'm sure traffic counts are no, that we've had are no longer relevant, and updating that is probably very important. But I would like a chance to maybe review that report as well, and just kind of see, it would just help me with context and kind of help me with trying to figure out exactly what problems we're trying to solve apart from the obvious, and what we're going to get from this report that we don't already know. So I'm kind of there at the moment. It, it feels like I need a bit more time. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy to expand a little bit on that. There have been, has been quite a bit of work with the corridor, but my understanding is we've never landed on a preferred alternative. And so part of this, this alternatives analysis, if you will, helps us define that guidebook for the future, so that we know exactly when we can put certain facilities and non-motorized facilities, what, what different phasing that we could look at for the future. So this provides us with an alternative that council and the community will help us select, that we know exactly what the corridor will look like. It may take us five, 10, 20 years to get there, and that helps us when we're thinking about our 20-year project lists for our comprehensive plan update as well. So that it is a really great time to be looking at this and really know what we can and can't build within the quarter. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of things. One, I'm very interested in all of the alternatives, because I think one of the challenges we've had with that corridor is our, most of the things that have been presented to us in the past have looked at it in compliance with what our current road standards are. And sometimes we can actually be more innovative and creative and get way better results, way better results in terms of efficiency and less impact to the environment and maybe even less cost. So I love that we're going to look at those alternatives. One thing, though, Jed, that you said that was a little concerning to me was, you said that, you know, we'd be doing the modeling to look at travel times. And I think that this is where I want to make sure, as we go into this, and maybe that's the goal of the council workshop, is what are the goals that we're looking at? Because I do think we get very different results. If the goal is to optimize for single-passenger cars, that you're going to design something very different than if we're trying to optimize for transit and reducing environmental impacts and those types of things. So, because, you know, things like public safety, right? The, the transportation safety, one of the things that, you know, kind of had that aha moment last year was, there aren't a whole lot of places to safely cross the street in that corridor, yet we have parks and bus stops. And, you know, it's one thing to ask people to walk 30 feet to an intersection to cross, it's another thing to ask someone to walk a half a mile to the nearest intersection to cross, that's not reasonable. So I think there's a lot of opportunities here to optimize for things that aren't necessarily single occupancy vehicle travel times. And I don't know that that's what I want to optimize for. Again, I'd love to see the latest traffic counts. I know that, you know, the last time I looked at traffic counts, it was interesting, because they kind of evened out, right? There wasn't as much of a difference. We didn't have these peaks, these big peaks, but we did see an increase in traffic counts during the middle of the day, right? So more people working from home, driving around the city. So we don't really have, you know, the same kinds of issues we had before. So maybe looking at pedestrian safety and multimodal safety is more of a priority than vehicular travel times, or at least individual vehicular travel times. I'd love to see us optimize around transit and multimodal and pedestrian safety. And I think, you know, the more cars we get off the road, the faster the remaining cars can go. So that's, that's kind of how I look at that. So is that, is that what the, the council workshop will be for, is to kind of lay out those goals? So when we're looking at the alternatives, we're looking at what to optimize for, and we're not just modeling for vehicular travel times?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead. Perfect.
Jed, yes.
Round set.
Yes, awesome. I like the emphatic yes.
Yes, that would be ideal, because that, that would be the use for the council workshop. The reason is, is that the travel times is just one metric among the other policy objectives. And what we're going to see is that as you look at the different alternatives, you might say we can add travel lanes, or we can add different features for safety. Safety is a, is a big part of the analysis under Task 5. And it, it's just one of the points, and that, that is not greater than all the other ones, right? But it will, it will show relative changes in how much you're getting for money by adding lanes versus safety improvements. So it'll be one way to measure and compare among the other objectives that council will highlight at the workshop.
And then one other question, I know, like, it's already a big price tag, but I'm just curious why we picked starting at 12th as opposed to 8th? Just because it seems like it would be a more complete corridor if you went all the way down to Inglewood Hill Road, right? You're, you're kind of just have that one little section there. If we do all these really cool improvements, but then you kind of end up at that intersection. So I'm just curious why we wouldn't go all the way to the major intersection if we're looking at, at all of this?
We could consider that, that would add.
I know, I know. We're heading in the wrong direction, but, but I think marginally, right? Like, I'm just kind of thinking about if we're really going to be doing some modeling, right? You know, the only time we really see any really, you know, or the worst traffic is Eastlake, when, you know, in the morning at Eastlake. That intersection gets kind of wily for about 15 minutes. Now, I'm not proposing that we have to do any major changes for a 15-minute-a-day problem, but it's just interesting, because I do feel like, you know, we're going to stop, you know, and, and just have that one little segment there. So, I don't know, it's just something to think about. Maybe it's as we look at the alternatives, if we feel like we're making some really cool innovative changes, maybe we do need to extend it all the way down to, to that major intersection. Thanks.
Councilmember Trane?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Stewart about why this, I was concerned or wondered why we don't do the whole corridor. So that's been stated, so thank you. I kind of understand where Councilmember O'Farrell's coming from, is like, is this the right time to do this? And do I feel comfortable on the 2nd of January to do an almost-million-dollar contract with a company that, well, just, let's just say I wasn't pleased at all with the last time we had a contract with this company with the results of the work that they did? And that's why this is coming back to us again. So if I have someone bake me a wedding cake, and I have to have another cake baked, and they wrecked the first one, why, I wouldn't go back to them. So I don't know if that's something, a concern for staff or the city manager, but I'm a little leery about even using Partite as the provider of this service based on history with the city and with them. So I'm, I'm, so there's three reasons right there. And if I delved and spent even another week or so, I think I could, if you gave me another week or two to really look into the scopes and the tasks, I, I think it's, Councilmember Howe said this, that, you know, can we get what we really want to do with 10 alternatives at a lesser price? Because there's some of this fluff work in here that could just, why are we doing that? We don't need to do that, or we've done that before, or we have previous studies that have, the public has talked to us a lot about this corridor over the years. And that was mentioned as well. So, yeah, I'm definitely not ready, and I don't, I'm not interested really in working with Partite as the contractor. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
So I had asked earlier this morning for names of the other consultants, and I did get the names, but it would be super helpful to see their RFQs and what they had quoted. So just for transparency, it'd be just, if I could see that, that'd be great.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm feeling a vibe here, that perhaps this is not going forward. I did have a couple of questions. So what happens if this is not approved, like, this evening? What, you know, I'm just trying to look at, like, timeline, obviously, this is a big undertaking. This is already in the budget.
It is budgeted.
Yeah. And so that's, I'm like, where, when are we going to start bumping up against?
It is, it's a delay in project scope, obviously. This is really important work, and just to remind council, this is the top, top-scoring project on the tip, and so it's, it's budgeted for, it's TIF-eligible, Stormwater has contributions, and the project team is ready to go. So we are ready, the moment council approves this contract, to get going on the work. We are hoping to use this as a guideline for some of our 20-year project lookouts that will be built into the comprehensive plan. We won't have the preferred alternative selected, but we're hoping to know a little bit more about potential project costs that'll help us with our 20-year look as well. So it is really great timing. As we're wrapping up the transit plan, all of those projects will, will go into this work as well. So the timing was all done intentionally, and so any delay would just obviously delay the, the start of the project. And should we reconsider a consultant, we'd likely, would need to consult with city attorney, but we'd likely need to go back out for advertisement.
Yeah, and then if this is, I'm just trying to think, like, if I came back in one week, I'm just, you know, because obviously you're like, yeah, then I'll delay it by a week. I'm just trying to think of what's realistic for council to maybe get more questions answered, and then obviously, that's going to be more staff time and load on you all.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. I think what would be, so, two things, recall, next week is just boards and commission interviews, so we won't, that's not a, that's just a study session. So it'd be the 16th would be the next available opportunity for council to take action. I think in the meantime, what would be extraordinarily helpful for us if council does choose to delay, and then again, that's fine, is specific, what specific items that council needs to be able to make a decision? We're happy to get those to you to help with that process. I think one of the pieces I did want to follow up on, I know we've done two traffic counts in the recent year, I believe, so we do have definitely updated traffic counts that are available. If they haven't been shared already, we're more than happy to share those with council to take a look at. I also just want to clarify for council's consideration, as we talk about this, that as Audrey pointed out, this has been, this is a highest-scoring project on the tip, but some version of this project has been, and I think Audrey checked me here, but on the city's tip since the year 2000. And so part of this is, it's really hard for us to be able to answer some of the questions about what should happen where without actually doing the analysis. And so we are not at a point of giving you options to consider and make policy choices right now, because we don't know what those guideposts are. And the reason for kicking off this project and doing the work is to be able to give you information collectively to be able to make decisions. And so I think that's the piece. And I totally understand, I'm not, I understand council members aren't prepared to make a decision, but I just want to help clarify that a lot of these pieces, separate from the actual scope of the contract itself, are, this is what we need to find out to be able to come back and then have the discussion with you all and answer your questions.
That makes sense. And I do see a couple of hands. So does two weeks sound something doable for council? Like, are there things that maybe are not going to get answered, like Scott was saying, until the study is done? Or do you think you can get questions answered in two weeks to come back? Would you like, Deputy Mayor Howe, you have your?
Yeah, basically, if you can come back to me, I can tell you exactly what I want. I want everything costed. That's what I want. I want a light item, what does it cost, and what is the prioritization, like, and what dependencies? So if you don't do this, this doesn't work. So do two and three, but if you can't do four now, you know, or whatever that is, dependencies, and what does it cost? And then I can make a decision.
No problem. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so I think kind of based on my question and what Scott just said, it, it feels like the first part of this is, like, getting the council together, identifying the priorities and starting to, to lay that out. And so a lot of those other things are going to be dependent on what we define, right? So if we define, you know, that the only priority is pushing more cars through, that's a whole set of alternatives that would probably cost one set of things. If we're looking at multimodal and we're looking at other things, that may be a little more creative, that may be more, i- i- am I on the right track? I'm not trying to be difficult, but it feels like some of that, like, when you put together a proposal like this, you sort of have these broad-brush costs, because you say, hey, we need to gather information which will inform the next phase of work that we have to go do. So I'm not even sure you, I mean, I'm not trying to answer for you, but just based on my experience, I'm not sure you can give us all of those details in a lot of specificity. I'm assuming, because you need to know information from us to begin with. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
We would, yes. We would very much like to hear from council on what the priorities are going forward for the corridor. We have a pretty good understanding based on the transit plan and the climate action plan, but really want to confirm those before we fully engage with the community. There are quite a few items and tasks within here that likely wouldn't change price a whole lot.
Okay.
Some of the geotechnical work and different things, that'll be done regardless of approach, I would say. And Jed, please jump in here. If we would want to possibly save some money, we could look at starting with fewer alternatives. But again, we want to take a broad lens and really look at innovation here so that we can end up with a quarter that council will help us select a phasing plan so that we can have construction happening along the corridor. And that, that final phasing plan of the preferred alternative may be a little bit more traditional in terms of physical, you know, boundaries and traditional phases. It may look different. So we, we would like to also explore that with a consultant, so we may end up making improvements that focus on transit first through the whole length of the corridor versus, you know, just each second, physical segment of the corridor. So that's part of this work effort as well.
So maybe asking another question is, are there really steps we can cut out? Because it feels like if we start cutting steps out, then we're not going to end up with a preferred alternative that we can chunk up into bite-sized phases that we can actually go execute on every, you know, two to four years, which is probably what we're looking at, you know, in terms of costs? That, starting, like, we need to get council priorities, we need to get community input. Those are things we have to do no matter what. Then we have to pick some number of alternatives. And so to your point, we could potentially save a few dollars if we did fewer alternatives, but we've done fewer alternatives in the past, and councils never liked any of the alternatives. So I kind of like the idea that we're going to look at more alternatives to make sure we land in a place that covers all the bases. But, and then beyond that, it's really taking those alternatives to the next level and really just chunking it up, right? And figuring it out.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make the shift from 10 alternatives down to six, down to three, and then down to one. And with each phase, there's more analysis that's being done. So we're very cognizant of what's being done at what level, so we're not spending a lot on all 10 alternatives. That's not a good use of tax dollars, right? So we're very cognizant on the phasing approach with this. There is not a whole lot to cut, but that is council's, you know, consideration and look forward to providing more information in two weeks if that's the direction we're headed to. We've already negotiated quite a bit with a consultant and tried to find areas where we could streamline and make, make sure that this was the most efficient contracts possible, but also recognize that we really want to prioritize different objectives for the corridor based on council goals and community goals, as well as look at things with a really innovative lens.
And how much of an impact will a two-week delay have on?
It's, a two-week delay is fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. Audrey, really for me, I just, in order to help me to understand this, I just kind of would like for you to kind of come back to me. I don't expect you to answer this question right now, but I'd like the information to come back to me, is, you know, what problems are we hoping to solve with this, with this report? And what is this report going to tell us that we don't already know? That that, that previous report that we did some, was it five to 10 years ago, that told us X information? What is it that we don't currently know that we need to find out? That would help me figure this out in my head. I'd also like us to take on board the public comment that we've received and some of the suggestions that were made. I think they were, I would like to kind of hear your comments on that. And so that would just help me figure out that this, and I can see what you're saying and, yeah, with getting those 10 alternatives, and I think the more alternatives that we can glean, probably the better. But I just need to kind of figure that out in my head, like, what are we, what are we going to get from this report that we don't already know apart from an updated traffic count?
And there, well, I could start, and then we can, of course, follow up in two weeks if you need more information, that's fine. But part of it is utilizing our new traffic demand model that we've been updating for the comprehensive plan update. A lot's changed in eight years in our world, including our traffic count. So that's one piece of information, as well as really, again, going through the corridor at a very holistic level in understanding where different lane improvements and roadway improvements need to be made, and as well as really prioritizing transit through the corridor. So that's something that would be much improved from the last report we did. And Jed, if you can elaborate, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that we're in a different environment. I mean, we have the transit plan, we've got light rail. The microsimulation is one of the data points that will be very much affected by the new traffic demand model. And it's been prepared for the comprehensive plan update. And so all of these things, it's really a different situation. We're making sure that in the numbers now and then forecasted out 20 years, that we're answering the future needs on the new condition and the new traffic patterns. And of course, we're balancing that with the council workshop and with the council's objectives. One way that we could save money is that there's a lot of hours in public outreach. So for instance, if we have these two big efforts for two phases of public outreach, in the past, we've had less public outreach where we don't do the open, you know, blue-sky type public outreach, that'd be a way to save money, as an example. And then also, when we have 10 alternatives, I mean, of course, there's labor and hours looking at the cost and the implications of 10 down to six projects and less. So this scope is relatively open-ended to allow a process to lead us, you know, to what, you know, where council and the public would lead with the improvements that they want. If we prejudge it, it'll, we can reduce costs. That's why when we, whenever you do a corridor plan, you know, it's like, it's easier if you already have a plan, you know, you're just building to a city standard, then you have, you can just engineer to that, and you don't have all this public outreach and as much information. This is giving us full, a lot of leeway in how we navigate and so that we arrive. We're not prejudging in this, but we could also, you know, have, we could also look at what council wants and try to save money by eliminating things that we don't need. And that could just be the number of options. But again, it's hard to talk about that at this point. Also, past projects, they had a different concurrency. They had different assumptions that were driven by council policies at that time, which influenced how they were, that they reached their conclusions. And we're in a, we're just in a totally different environment. We have a different comprehensive, comprehensive plan.
Okay, thanks, Jed. That helps a bit. I mean, the cost is like, you know, almost a million dollars, and that is a lot of money. But I certainly don't want to reduce public outreach, and I would like as many alternatives as possible. I think, you know, that would be the time to kind of pursue and kind of show that level of imagination. So I don't necessarily want to cut costs in that way. I just need a bit more time to further understand the situation so that I, going into this, I know exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. And maybe it's New Year's haze, but I just like a little bit more time. Thank you.
All right, council, I'm not seeing any other hands. So I think, yeah, I mean, I am good with moving forward because I think a lot of the decisions, our hopes and dreams and needs are going to be concurrent with this work. So I am comfortable with it, but I am totally good if it still works with your time, timeline to come back in two weeks. Because I don't want to overflow, you know, like what we want to see in Sahali in the next two weeks, because that's obviously not going to be super helpful. But I think if there are some of these more pointed questions, or if anyone else has any, I don't know if there's anything else we can provide or help.
We're happy to come back in two weeks. And in the meantime, if you have any further questions, just, yeah, send us an email and happy to address those.
Okay, unless anyone would like to make a motion? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Audrey. Thank you, Jed. Thank you, welcome. All righty. So that will be coming back on January 16th. So next we have, I'll pass it to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Welcome to 2024. Just to remind again, on January 15th is the MLK Day of Service at 11:02 at Lower Commons Park. I am told that gloves, snacks, water, and tools will be provided. So it's a low barrier to entry to come, rain or shine, to come help out on that day. Reminder, rolling the new year, that our next coffee with council is on Saturday, this Saturday, this coming Saturday at Met Market. And that, on behalf of Krista, I do want to have a quick conversation with council, if I may, Mayor, around questions for the in-person interviews for next Tuesday for the different boards and commissions. We had a standard set that were part of the application process, and prior rounds, we have done the one question per candidate. And so I think the question is, what would that be? Krista, did I get, did I get all of that?
Yeah, it's just kind of how we were going to determine the question, and then potentially, since the Sustainability Commission is a brand-new commission, if there were any, if there was a different question, or if you wanted it all to be the same, and then I would send it out per the previous process ahead of time to the applicants.
So we do have one new council member that might have some questions to add. I'm just trying to think, we had that bank of questions, and I don't know if that would be something we could send some votes on or to you.
Yes, potentially, we could just set a timeline for sending potential questions and then determining which question you want to just, we would have to send the question out by Monday to the applicants.
Well, seeing that our bank of applicants is not huge, I don't, I definitely don't want to discourage people. So I am comfortable with one question. I don't know, let's see, you said Tuesday, or you need them by Monday? No, before, obviously way before Monday. So.
We would, we would have maybe potentially send question options, and then the council would choose which one they prefer. So there would basically be a timeline to send in your question, and then a timeline to choose the question, and then sending it to the applicants on Monday. So potentially, you could send questions by Thursday and then vote right away by Friday, and then I send it out Monday?
Yeah, let's do that. Thursday, close the business, send your questions. Friday, we will, you'll send us something magical, and we will reply only to you with our voting preference. And is everyone good with one question? Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, seeing as I have not done this before, at least from the dais, could you send me the bank of questions that we've generated previously so I can? Thank you.
I have no idea what the questions are. I think that's, I was like, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah. And is, does anyone want more than one question, like, for the sustainability, or? All good? Okay, so I think one question will do it.
Okay, and we were doing three minutes or five minutes for their response?
I think five because the intro, or there was like a four-minute thing, so they could at least introduce themselves and then answer the question.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds good. Super clear, as always. All right. Anything else, Scott or Krista?
I know, Mayor, thank you, that's all for me.
Okay, and then that's another encouragement for more applications to come in, and they are due Friday?
Krista, what time, Friday?
5:00.
Awesome, great, thank you. All right, council, does anyone else have any reports? Okay, thank you. So next is our closed session, collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to RCW How long, Carrie?
I think fairly brief, no more than 15 minutes.
Awesome. 50, 8:50. We'll be back at 8:50, because I still have to adjourn, right? Okay, great, thank you. All right, council's adding another 10 minutes, should be back by nine or before then. Thank you. All right, we are back for a moment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, good evening, thanks, everybody.
Good night.